My name is Scott Halopka. I'm Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I'd like to start the meeting by acknowledging the committee members present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye. Ms. Hafford?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy? Ms. German? Mr. Kaefer? Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
And Mr. Heino has already indicated he wasn't going to be here. Mr. Hinton? Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo?
Aye. Ms. Brophy's now here.
Ms. Pinero? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you all. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear from the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Property Management Division of the Office of Budget and Finance, and Baltimore County Public Library. After each presentation, members of the committee will have an opportunity to ask questions of the presenters. Before we begin the presentations, I want to note that while there may be members of the community in attendance tonight, this meeting is not designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizens' input meeting on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement budget. Unless there are any other questions, I'd like to get started. I'd like to invite Mr. Bob Smith and his staff from the Department of Recreation and Parks to begin their presentation. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Planning Board members. I'm Bob Smith, the Director for the Department of Recreation and Parks here in Baltimore County. I think the last time I presented, I was the Acting Director, so I'm pleased to still be here as the Director as of May first with the Department of Recreation and Parks, and we're excited to present this evening's CIP for Recreation and Parks. So Drew, if you'd pull that up, please. Thank you. Okay, I'm pleased to offer you a presentation of the Department of Recreation and Parks' proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five capital improvement program. Having sufficient capital funding is essential to providing and maintaining a quality park and recreation system that supports both free time, recreation activities, and programs run by the Department and the Recreation Nature Councils. As the department approaches its seventy-fifth anniversary this year, we're getting a little older. It faces challenges associated with adequately maintaining and rehabilitating the county's extensive network of trails and recreational infrastructure, enhancing and revitalizing parks to meet modern recreational demands and acquiring and developing additional park sites. So the Department of Recreation and Parks, with the assistance of other county agencies, including property management, utilizes the funding within the Parks Preservation and Greenways Capital Improvement Program in a variety of ways. First, there is park acquisition to acquire properties to serve as public parkland. An example would be the recently acquired one hundred and nine-acre Dogwood Road Park Site pictured in... Drew, can we go to the... You're one slide too far. Drew, can you go back one, please? There we go. Thank you. It's pictured in the Dogwood Road Site pictured in the upper left. Next is park development underway, such as construction associated with the newly planned Sparrow Point Park, which is located in the upper right. The lower-left photo is an example of a park enhancement project at Ravens Playground, located at Northwest Regional Park. And to the bottom right is renovations at the Rocky Point Park Path, which goes down to the point. And these are essential in keeping our... These projects are essential in keeping our parks, recreation sites, and facilities safe, attractive, and functional. Finally, there are other special purpose funding investments, such as the annual allocation in neighbor space of Baltimore County and other parties. Next slide, please, Drew. There are currently seven project categories through which revenue is allocated to fund a wide variety of capital projects. These project categories are the holding places for budgeted CIP funding, with capital project allotment later created to initiate individual product projects within that funding. For example, most playground renovations or replacement projects are typically funded out of P three oh one Recreation Facility renovations, while a new trail project would be funded through P three oh nine, which is Greenways, Stream Valleys, and Trails. Next slide, please. This slide displays the appropriation summary for the Parks Preservation and Greenways CIP from the Capital Budget Supporting Detail booklet for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. It's important to note that the capital budget, unlike agency operating budgets, carries over funding from year to year. This reflects the nature of many capital projects, which may often take multiple years to be completed. For example, a major new park construction project could take three years or more to complete the stages of planning, design, and construction. You'll note that the amount of capital funding appropriated in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four is substantial in comparison to the out-years of fiscal two thousand and twenty-five and fiscal two thousand and twenty-nine. This is a result of the county's budget process whereby the amount of the out-year funding is limited to the amount of county bond funding, as well as other estimated funding sources, such as Maryland Program Open Space Funds and local open space waiver fee and lieu funds. It is common for additional general funds allocated through the tier funding process to supplement the out-year funding once those fiscal year CIP processes is initiated. Additionally, in some circumstances, funding appropriated in even-numbered fiscal years may be intended to be utilized over a two-year fiscal period, with supplemental funding provided in odd number fiscal years on an as-needed basis. Next slide, Drew. Numerous revenue sources are utilized to fund the Department of Recreation and Parks' capital budget. Most are commonly found in other agency capital budgets, while some, such as Program Open Space, or POS, and local open space waiver fees are unique to Recreation and Parks. The amounts of funding available for these revenue sources varies from year to year, often as a result of economic and funding priority decisions. For instance, state aid amounts vary from year to year, with the amount not known until the annual Maryland Consolidated Capital Bond Loan Bill is adopted at the Maryland's State Legislative Session. On occasion, other revenue sources will be utilized, such as Maryland Community Parks and Playgrounds Infrastructure, or LPPI, program which bought the county a total of twenty million dollars over the two most recent fiscal years. Next slide, Drew. I will now provide a brief overview of the primary capital project categories in Parks Preservation and Greenways Capital Improvement Program. Project category three oh one, which we have here, is the primary source for park and recreation facility renovations and capital funded maintenance. A strong county investment in this project category is essential. Some revenue sources, such as Program Open Space, are intended to be expended on park acquisition, development, and enhancement, and may not be used for renovations, and may only be used for renovations on a limited basis. A total of seven million dollars was appropriated within P three oh one for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, with no funding program in for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Since this project category funds critical renovation programs, the agency will likely seek tier funding to support this project P three oh one and its vital projects. Next slide, Drew. P three oh one is used for a broad range of park and recreation facility renovation and enhancement programs and needs. This slide lists some of the more common uses for P three oh one funding. Some of the programs consist predominantly of renovations and repairs, while others are more involved facility and amenity replacement programs. One of the largest capital renovation programs funded out of P three oh one is the Playground Replacement and Renovation Program. This is an example of a program that is more replacement than renovation-oriented. In most cases, all playground equipment is replaced, utilizing only the existing playground surface already on the site. As of today, less than eight thousand dollars remains of the four point two seven million allocated for this program this fiscal year, including additional tier funding that was invested to boost and expedite this program. The twenty-two playgrounds have been replaced, or in the process of being replaced, not counting about a half dozen others that are being replaced as part of a larger park renovation project. Next slide. This slide shows some before and afters of our playground replacements. Along the top row, the after photos, if you move from left to right, are Hamletown Park, Cox's Point Park, and Hannah Moore Park. The Hannah Moore Park playground remains under construction, but it is nearing completion. Where possible, we have strived to make the playgrounds bigger, different, and better, so to avoid the same old, same old, and add thematic pieces to the park playgrounds. Project category three oh two provides the majority of capital funding for the construction and renovation of athletic fields, ball diamonds, and associated lighting systems. A total of eight hundred and fifty thousand is presently programmed within this program for FY two thousand and twenty-five. Project three oh two Athletic Field Construction and Renovation funds an assortment of programs and individual projects associated with ball diamonds and athletics fields, as well as the related infrastructure to those fields. The three projects pictured in this slide are examples of large-scale projects funded out of P three oh two. From left to right, this is the Hereford Middle School Recreation LED Conversion, which is one of our first conversions to LED lights, located at Hereford Middle School. In the middle is County Home Park Synthetic Turf Construction. This was a replacement of an existing kind of worn-out grass field with synthetic turf, and Eastern Regional Park Light Pole Replacement. We had an emergency replacement of all of the lights associated with the athletic fields at Eastern Regional Park. So this is them getting ready to put the new poles in. They don't currently look like that on the ground. The capital project category also funds a number of critical renovation and maintenance programs, including the Ball Diamond D-Lipping Program, Athletic Field and Ball Diamond Rebuild Program, Synthetic Turf Field Resurfacing Program, and Backstop Safety Fence and Player Bench Renovations. Next slide. Thank you. This slide shows some of the invaluable ball diamond and athletic field renovation programs. The two photos on the left show before and after for the backstop at Essex Elementary School Recreation Center, where the old rusty backstop and its associated safety fences were replaced. Top right is an example of an old, worn-out player bench, showing some of the common problems, such as rusting of the metal components, including the direct barrel support posts. Concrete pads are sometimes included as part of a bench replacement project, particularly where we see erosion in soil conditions attributing to those concerns. Bottom right is replacement of the indoor soccer field service. The field service for both indoor and outdoor synthetic turf fields must be replaced as they wear out over time and compress. The other upcoming projects funded with P three oh two included the construction of a LED lighting system at Linover Park and Overly, LED field lighting conversions at multiple other sites, and indoor turf field surface replacement at the Southeast Regional Recreation Center. Project category P three oh seven provides funding for most of the Department of Recreation and Parks' largest-scale development enhancement projects, despite P three oh seven's name and is used for development enhancements of all types of parks, not just community neighborhood parks, and occasionally at school recreation centers. The upcoming Recreation Activity Centers, or RACs, in Middle River and Rosedale be in prime examples. Total of six point six million is presently programmed within this program for FY two thousand and twenty-five, though the amount of Program Open Space funding may be adjusted as a result of potential changes from programming POS funding every other year to annually. This project category is the most commonplace where state aid secured, the legislators utilize. Next series of slides shows a number of recently completed and underweight P three oh seven projects. Please bear in mind that these are renderings and conceptual, and product may vary somewhat. So this is Meadow Creek Park, situated in Pikeville, formerly known as Church Lane. It's a new park development project, a four-acre neighborhood park site acquired in two thousand and twenty. Preservation of green space centered around Church Meadow Creek, which bisects the park, is the prevailing theme for the park. Walking paths with multiple surface types created an environmental education loop, with other recreational opportunities provided by a natural playground area, picnic table seating, and open field areas. Natural features abound, including the pollinator guarding and natural plantings in Meadow. Park development project expected to be completed this summer. Construction of the Middle River Recreation Activity Center, or RAC... Sorry, you can go ahead, Drew. Thank you. Is well underway. RACs are the successors to what was previously called the Police Athletic League, or PAL Centers, situated on the grounds of the Glenmar Elementary School Center in Middle River. This is one of two new RAC facilities that will both serve youth programmings and activities conducted by the PAL Recreation Centers and general... PAL Recreation Center staff and the general community recreation programs and activities. Each of the RACs will feature a large gymnasium with integrated stage, numerous activity rooms, office space, kitchen, restrooms, and storage. And this particular one is built with an aeronautical theme to kind of pay to the history of the Glen L. Martin Airport, located close by. Next one, Drew. Okay, the second of the Recreation Activity Center projects presently under construction is the Rosedale Rack, to be constructed on the campus of McCormick Elementary School. This rack will also... The theming is esports and computer technology, so this will feature an e-gaming and technology theme, and included dedicated e-gaming room within the center. The county celebrated the groundbreaking for the Hazelwood Skate Park this past autumn, and the agency decided to offer an East County counterpart to the Sandy Hills Skate Park in Lansdowne, or they refer to it as the Downer, if you've heard the term. Okay, designed by the internationally renowned Skate Park Designers Pillar Design Studios, and based on significant input from the Baltimore County Skateboard Council, this state-of-the-art facility would feature two concrete bowls, numerous connected features designed for varying skill levels, parking seating, and extensive integrated landscaping. This will be the first concrete skateboard we've built in over fifty years. Sparrow Point Park is being constructed on a twenty-two-acre waterfront parcel donated to the county by Trade Point Atlantic in southeast Baltimore County. This project will result in the transformation of a former industrial and land associated with the Bethlehem Steel Complex into a high-quality park site that features both indoor and outdoor recreation amenities. The estimated completion date for this project is winter of two thousand and twenty-five. The Diamond Ridge Family Park is a small park situated in the Windsor Mill area, adjacent to the Diamond Ridge and Woodlands Public Golf Courses. This park site, which is split by the Dogwood Run Stream, has long suffered from access issues and repeated flooding, related damage to its wooden bridge that straddles the stream. Design of enhancements is nearing completion, with the proposed improvements to include a new stream crossing, new and renovated paths, and excess stairs, replacement of the piers on the park's pond, construction of an accessible picnic area, and a parking lot refurbishment. Gwyn Oak Park is in the Woodlong Community. The western Baltimore County is a rich heritage, being situated in a park that was once a segregated amusement park. The park has long been a popular picnic site, and its greenery and views of the Gwyn's Fall and its associated dam make it one of the county's most attractive landscapes. Among the proposed park enhancements are a significant parking expansion to address the shortage of parking that occurs during events in prime picnic season, replacement of picnic pavilions, additional picnic pavilion, and a themed playground expansion that will pay to the history of the carousel that was originally there in Gwyn Oak Park, and entrance and landscaping improvements. Many other P three oh seven funded projects are underway in design or planning phase. The displayed list is just a partial list of these key projects. Should be noted that in sometimes necessary to reprioritize available county funding, which may result in projects being postponed or reduced in scope or canceled. P three oh seven also funds the agency's local park comprehensive enhancement program, which is intended to refurbish and at times reinvent existing older neighborhood and community parks, individual products, individual projects such as those listed for Colgate Park, Cox's Point Park, and Merritt Point Park are also funded through that capital project. Project category three oh nine provides funding for trail and path renovations and construction. The Department of Public Works and Transportation has a similar capital project, though theirs mostly focuses on sidewalks and on-road pedestrian or bicycle areas, while Recreation and Parks P three oh nine budget predominantly funds park-based trails and path networks. A total of three hundred thousand dollars is presently programmed within this program for FY two thousand and twenty-five. A number of projects funded out of the P three oh nine remain in the design or planning stage at present. These range from the minor renovations of the Red Run in the Red Run Trail in Owens Mills, to major restoration of the Milford Mill Trail, to the construction of the new trails on the North Point Peninsula, to ongoing planning associated with the Six Bridges Trail in Towson. The slideshow is various materials related to the Six Bridges Trail Extension feasibility study. P six oh one is entirely dedicated to the park acquisition program. Specific projects are not listed until they are completed, so as to avoid potential land speculation and competition for desired properties. Total five million is presently programmed within this program for FY two thousand and twenty-five, though the amount of Program Open Space funding may be adjusted as a result of potential change from programming POS funds every other year to annually. Park acquisition continues to remain a priority of the administration and the department. While only one additional property was acquired in calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, there is a long list of underway acquisitions, including several that are expected to be completed by the end of this fiscal year. The county has been concentrating on a quality-over-quantity approach with the park acquisition program acquiring properties that will make functional park and recreation sites, with increased equity being key considerations. Excuse me. This slide displays a selection of park site acquisitions completed in recent years, displaying all diversity of properties that have been procured. All six are highly suitable for various forms of park development. We see the leadership through athletics, property located in Lansdowne, which was a turnkey facility, Dogwood Road on the west side, Burley Property in the southwest area, Paul's Farm Property located in Pikeville, Villa Maria up here off Delaney Valley Road, and the Bierman Property in White Marsh, Perryville, White Marsh area. This project category, P seven five five, this project category generally has limited funding, as other project categories such as P three oh one, P three oh seven, or P three oh nine are often utilized to increase park and recreation facility accessibility. In FY two thousand and twenty-four, there was twenty-five thousand programmed for this program, and there is no funding currently programmed for FY two thousand and twenty-five. Two largest current projects being funded through P seven five five are situated at Rocky Point Park and Rosedale Park. Both will correct existing access issues, and will also feature enhancements that will improve park users' experience. And that concludes my presentation, and we thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members?
I'd first like to thank you for the work around Diamond Ridge and then like Gwen Falls, but could you give me more information about this Dogwood Park? Where exactly is that located?
Sure, the Dogwood Property, and Drew, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just down the road, it's located adjacent to the new Green Burial Site, right, Drew?
Correct. It's right north of the Tapsco State Park. And we're looking at that for a potential mountain bike trail system.
So near the Diamond Ridge Golf Course, or the other way towards the city line?
Would be west. I can bring it up and share it before the end of this.
It's not far past the golf course.
Okay, then I know where it's at. That's fine. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Mr. Pirlo?
Thank you for the presentation. It's huge, impressive for our county, knowing that we have old recreation sites that have been a hundred years old here in the county. I might suggest that you consider doing some kind of pamphlet periodically to let the community know. I don't know, you know, maybe it's on the website, but I just thought something that, you know, in the rec centers that people could pick up and see that our county is spending a ton of money on redoing our recreation sites. You guys should get some accolades for that, because it's pretty impressive. We had some hearings on the BG&E site that was torn down recently off of the bay, Mountain Bowies Quarters. The neighborhood told us all that they wanted a park there, and we listened to various comments and things on that. I just wondered whether there is any discussion in the Department of Recreation about doing something there or not. I think it's probably not happening, but I just thought, since we got you here today, I might just ask that question.
Sure, we have heard the similar requests from the community. And as we take with all of our requests for park acquisition, we're very serious about looking at properties to acquire in Baltimore County, and we will continue to be open to that. So as we move through the kind of capital development process this fiscal year, if that comes forward as an option, I'm sure we'd be interested in looking.
Mr. McGinnis, do you still have a question?
Yes, has the Parks and Rec moved away from their location there on the Agricultural Center on Swan Road yet?
Tell me the farm park and egg center?
Yes.
Well, I don't know if moved away is an appropriate term. We still have staff that are located at that facility. Our staff still run the majority of the programming at that facility. And because that facility was purchased both with Program Open Space and I think federal soil and water conservation funds, it has to remain a park, and will always remain a park because of the type of funding that was used to purchase it. So I would imagine recreation parks will always have some role at that site, because it is classified as a park and purchased with Program Open Space, and thus must remain a park.
And now with the development of the agricultural program with the county, I think it's going to... Won't it be moving back more toward an agricultural designation as it originally intended for?
I can't really speak for what the, I guess, the Office of Agriculture within the Department of Economic and Workforce Development's plans are. That may be a question more focused to dudes. We do work closely with them at that site, as we have in the past, so we will continue to work with them. And as I said, since that was a park land, I'm sure we'll always have some role there, but we also always work towards partnerships with appropriate agencies.
Mr. Heckman, did you reach your hand?
I did. And again, just want to echo what everyone said. We definitely appreciate all the work that you and your team is doing. My question is around the rec centers. I do have a really nice bird's eye view, so I get to see that, you know, construction is humming along from my front window every day. So we're excited about that. My question would be, do we have any idea projections on what the staffing would look like in the hours that these centers will be open?
Sure, staffing is easy. The standard staffing component for our rec centers is three full-time recreation professionals in that staff, in that center, that operate the programming in that center, led by a a rec center coordinator, and then two rec center leaders, all permanent merit level positions of, you know, professional positions within the department, as well as a part-time allotment for what they, you know, feel the need is. In normal hours of operation, it generally runs three to nine PM daily, Monday through Friday. But we are looking at increasing program hours, and then in the summer, it operates, you know, from about eight in the morning to five in the evening. So... But we're also looking at ways, not just at the rec centers, we have a number of community centers across the system that we're trying to increase usage, particularly in the after-school hours, whether that's at a rec center or at like a community center, say, the community center in Stembridge at Renaissance Park, or the one located in Fullerton. Like, there's an opportunity also for the agency to get greater access at all of our centers, not just at the rec sites. But we are excited to see those come online. Those are kind of our new model of rec center, and we're looking forward to cutting the ribbon on those, which should be this coming fall.
Awesome. I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I do know you're making progress. I'm in District Four, and I know you're making progress on the Diamond Ridge Park. Regarding the Dogwood Road Site, you know, you're mentioning a mountain bike park. One, are there existing regulations regarding a mountain bike park? Two, will it be gated? The Diamond Ridge Park is not gated, and mostly, since the park's been dysfunctional for the past two-plus years, it's mostly an adult park after dark. So, you know, that site, I'm very familiar with it. The Dogwood Road, recently purchased site, it's pretty remote. How is that going to be... Are there going to be... Is it going to... Are you proposing gates? How's that going to be handled, so people aren't just partying back there?
Sure, and I wish that people partying in the park was as easy as a gate. It is not. As Deborah Shindel here from Property Management, who gets our maintenance calls when we have problems in our parks, can probably attest. While the gates are beneficial at times, depending upon the layout of a park, a park like Oregon Ridge is a good example where a gate works perfectly because of the access path. A park like Fort Howard Park is a community park. It works perfectly because there's limited access beyond the road. Dogwood Park may be a location that that is a good place to put a park, and we can certainly look at that. It's a blank slate right now, so we haven't even begun design on it. So as we get into the public input process, as we've done with most of our other park, our newer park projects, we're going to engage in a full public input to see the concerns, and if that's a concern, we'll make sure we raise that up to our design team when we get there. But as for regulations of mountain bike parks, we've never built one. So this will be a new process for us. We have heard kind of loud and clear for a couple of types of recreation we haven't historically addressed, whether that is, in this case, a mountain bike park, because we don't normally allow mountain biking on our trails, like in our nature parks. It just doesn't mix well with our day hikers and stuff. But we've also had requests for things like a cricket pitch, which we're looking to develop up off Delaney Valley Road. Frisbee disc golf was a big was a big push in the in the last budget cycle, we're we're engaged on a. Design on a new frisbee disc golf course as well. So we're going to learn a little bit as we get into the mountain bike because we have never built one. So we're excited to take that challenge on because it's a needed asset in Baltimore County and for the visitors of Baltimore County. So I, to answer your question, I don't know the regulations on on building a mountain bike park because we've never done it. And we're going to engage consultant as we do that.
Great, thank you.
Director Smith, just to add to that, our first step would be meeting with depths to go over what we can do there, so they would be heavily involved in that project.
Because because I am extremely familiar with the site and it is, it is a lot of very, very steep slopes. Into the Patasko River watershed, very close within a half a mile of the Patasko River. So I'm there, I'm sure erosion will come up in that discussion.
I'm sure.
Okay, any last question for Mr. Smith? I'm not seeing any, again, I I echo the rest of the the board, we thank you very much for the presentation. Always interesting and useful to hear what's going on. Before we turn to our next speaker, I just want to acknowledge that a couple of board members joined after I did roll call, so. Just for the record, Ms. Brophy, Mr. Hinton and Ms. Panero are also on with us tonight, so thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I would now like to invite Ms. Deborah Shindel from Property Management to begin her presentation, after that nice lead in from Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this opportunity to present our slideshow about property management. Very similar to recreation and parks, we work with all agencies throughout Baltimore County. We will work with Rec and Parks, we work with the library system, we work the detention center, the police department, the fire department, so we have the privilege to be partners with across the globe. And I'm going to turn it over to Nicole Finney-Frock, who is the Assistant County Property Manager to do our presentation this morning and or this afternoon, excuse me. And then we'll take any questions afterwards.
Hi, good evening, everyone. You all can hear me, correct? Okay. And Deb's going to steer our PowerPoint. Very good, everybody see our PowerPoint? Okay, very good. All right, again, I'm Nicole Finney-Frock, Assistant County Property Manager, thank you for having us this evening. Deborah Shindel is going to steer the slideshow, so Deb, can you go to our next slide? Thank you. Okay, property management provides service to all constituents. And agencies within the county, our unit, our agencies broke up into units, our building maintenance unit. Our grounds maintenance unit, our capital projects and enhancements. Our custodial division, and we also have a lease management. Next slide, please. Our custodial services, our facilities are routinely cleaned with with county staff as well as contractors. And we have approximately one hundred and forty-eight facilities that we routinely clean. We have five point six million square feet that we clean in total, both in-house and contracted, five point six million square feet. Also, property management participates in setting up special events throughout the year. And calendar year twenty twenty-three, we had sixty-one special events. Next slide, please. Our building maintenance division, we maintain a total of over two hundred and sixty primary. Buildings and six hundred and seventy-five accessory buildings and structures. It gives us a total of six point four five million square feet that we maintain for agencies such as senior centers. Rec and Park, libraries, fire stations, police facilities. Overall, net new increased square footage for FY twenty-four, four hundred and six thousand. And we anticipate around one hundred and twenty-four thousand coming in the future. Some of the FY twenty-four increases, we brought on Middle River Rack, Hammond's Ferry, or in the process of, excuse me, Chevrolet Road. The Board of Education Warehouse, three oh five Washington Avenue, Sears, Security Square Mall, Old Hannah Moore School. The new health trailer, new police trailer, and Rice's Town Wick. And in the future, we are expecting Sparrow's Point Park, Rosedale Rack, Essex Police Edition, New Catonsville Fire Station. Hereford Senior Center and the new Jacksonville Senior Center. Next slide, thank you, our grounds maintenance division, we oversee and maintain approximately two thousand mowing acres. We have a hundred and forty-nine playgrounds that we maintain for Rec and Parks. We have three hundred and eighty ball diamonds, thirty-one artificial turf fields and a hundred and sixty-six bed maintenance sites throughout the county. Next slide. Okay, how are capital projects selected? So this goes into our capital piece of our presentation. Building operations, property management creates a priority list based off of our building operation and equipment life cycles. Our programming needs, the agency creates a priority list based on the agency's programming needs. Collaboration, property management, office of budget and finance, and the agencies collaborate to create a final list to include all properties. Next slide, please. Criteria that are taken into consideration, the master plan. Guidelines and amendments, making sure we align with county's missions and goals. Sustainability, smart growth initiatives, enhancing the environment, excuse me, climate action. And reduction of carbon footprint are all considered. In the community, health and public safety and enhancing communities. The budget, of course, reduce our operating budgets, repair and placement, available funding. Collaboration of county and alternative funding resources. The operations of federal and state mandates and systematic replacement strategies. Timing and making sure timing's always appropriate in the coordination, thank you Deb, next slide. Okay, capital projects currently open in twenty twenty-four, we currently are holding at three hundred and sixty-eight total open projects. Seventy-one percent of our work orders are customer and or constituent generated, which makes up around two hundred and sixty-three of those projects. Twenty-nine percent of the open work orders are property management generated. Next slide. Type of completed capital projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Out of the two hundred and sixty-four completed. Twenty of them were office moves and renovations and furniture. Two of them are design and study. Hundred and twenty of them are repair and routine, hundred and nineteen are renovations and new equipment installations. And three of construction, major construction and demolition. Next slide. Some historic capital budget information, as as you see, we kind of took a few years back to twenty twenty and. Showing what type of expenditures and what we wanted to really highlight this year is record funding of over seventy-nine million dollars allotted to us. Next slide. FY twenty-four projects updates. We are excited to bring live facilities condition assessment, giving us the opportunity to assess. Well-needed assessment of a hundred and ninety-one facilities throughout the county, so we are reviewing drafts as we speak. The Woodlawn Police Precinct Roof Replacement Construction to be completed February of twenty twenty-four. As well as Fullerton Fire Station Women's Locker Room, design completed, construction to begin November of twenty twenty-four. Next. Some more project updates. Banneker Museum Roof Repair and Facade Replacement Construction to be completed May of twenty twenty-four. Cocke'sville Senior Center Parking Lot Expansion Designed to be completed January of twenty twenty-four and construction to begin May of twenty twenty-four. Next. FY twenty-five projected capital projects. The new Wilkins Police Precinct, we are very excited about, designed to be completed August twenty twenty-four. The Liberty Family Resource Center Generator and U S T Replacement Estimated Construction to start June twenty twenty-four. Hannah Moore Center New Sod Complex, oh, excuse me, S and D complex. The sound study completed January twenty twenty-four, designs start March twenty twenty-four. Also, Bykota Senior Center, the renovation designed to be completed May of twenty twenty-four. Next slide. Some more projects underway, FY twenty-five, New Catonsville Fire Station Number Four Designed to be completed August twenty twenty-four. Etchmere Senior Center HVAC Replacement Construction to be completed by June twenty twenty-four. And the Essex Police Precinct renovation and new addition designed to be completed January twenty twenty-five. Next. The Hereford Senior Center, new building designed to be completed June of twenty twenty-five. This will also have a gym in the facility that Rec will be sharing with and an underground parking lot. Also, energy performance contracting, we are in phase one of our audits and they are due August of twenty twenty-four. For the Historic Courthouse Detention Center, County Office Building and Public Safety Building. Next slide. Okay. The new Jacksonville Senior Center Designed to be complete May of twenty twenty-five.
I think we lost Nicole, so I will take over for Pikesville Senior Center slash Library. We are replacing the three rooftop units that project should be completed May of twenty twenty-four. And the Randalls Town Fire Station Kitchen renovation design is to be completed May of twenty twenty-four and then we'll move into construction.
Sorry, Deb, thank you, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, well, look, a perfect timing, that was the end of our presentation, I'm so sorry folks. Thank you very much for having us tonight and we're here for questions.
Ms. Finney-Frock, Ms. Shindel, one quick question, I I just curious, so what is the request for this year? You were saying it looked like last year's request was much larger than before, I just, how does this year's compare?
We're currently developing FY twenty-five as we speak. The exciting part for us is that we spent the year working on the facility assessment for all one hundred and ninety-one buildings. That prod, those projects and and the third-party assessment is being evaluated currently. And we are using that as now our tool for the future to develop our large capital program. Obviously, some of the projects that are moving forward, such as the Catonsville Fire, the Wilkins Police, that is all going to carry into the construction funding into FY twenty-five.
Thank you.
Um, hi Deb, how are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
It's just amazing how many facilities you oversee. And I know in so many departments staffing is such an issue. And I know you have construction companies handling all the major work, but your people still maintain a lot of the properties. How are you handling hiring new people?
So just like every agency and everyone else in the world, we, it it's been a challenge for us to actually attract with the. Current salary competitiveness across the nation. Construction companies are, you know, having to boost their salaries and it's hard for the county to compete. We are struggling in some areas, custodial staff, we have had no issues hiring, surprisingly. It is the first couple of years that I've seen in the last ten years that we've actually been able to attract custodial staff. We have tried to attract and the county's done a great job advertising. And really trying to get ahead of it and help us really promote some of our jobs through job fairs. But it is still a struggle for us to attract in in the trades, building maintenance, grounds maintenance and capital construction. We're hoping soon that it levels out and that we get to see more people wanting to come into the government, so put the word out, we're always looking for good people.
Well, good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Other questions? Ms. Brophy, did you raise your hand or are you just motioning?
No, I was just motioning, thank you.
Okay, I'll give it one last go, otherwise, thank you, Ms. Shindel and your staff for the presentations. Always interesting, it's always impressive, the varied amount of work that you guys have to handle, so.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Finally, I'd like to invite Ms. Sonia Alcaterra Antoine from Baltimore County Public Library to begin her presentation.
All right, good evening, planning board members, thank you for having me today.
I'm I'm listening to my, no, I'm just listening to my planning board meeting, I'm muted, so it's okay.
Howard, mute yourself.
You're going to have to bear with me because I'm flying solo today, so I am driving and I am speaking, can you see my slides?
Yes, you're good.
Can you see my notes or just my slides?
No, we do not.
Okay, perfect, then I did it right. Before I get started, I just want to echo what was just said previously about property management and the incredible work that they do, they have a massive portfolio to manage. Including libraries and they do such a fantastic job of trying to juggle many balls in the air simultaneously and they do such a good job of taking care of us, so. Everything that I'm talking about today about libraries could not and would not be possible without the support of property management, so thank you to them and thank you to Deb and her team. All right, so at Baltimore County Public Library, our mission is to provide opportunities to explore, learn, create and connect, and so. We provide access to the resources that are going to help people be successful in school, work and in life. I like to say that the word public comes before the word library, our job is to serve our community. And people, when they think of libraries, they typically think of books, books, yes, are a big part of our mission, but that's not all we do. We're really not just about books, we're about transformation and our facilities facilitate that transformation that people see. In their lives and in their families' lives and ultimately in the community. Our focus at at BCPL is making sure that we have twenty-first century facilities that are up to twenty-first century standards. We have nineteen facilities, of those nineteen, twelve need to be brought up to date so that they are modern, relevant and inviting. The average age of our buildings is fifty years old, life looked very different fifty years ago. Our libraries are built at a time when people communicated differently, shared information differently. And so our buildings need to be brought up to speed. Another challenge that we face is that we don't have enough public library space in the community. The state standard is is that we should have one square foot of public library space per capita and currently we're at half that, so that means we. Need bigger spaces and ultimately we need additional spaces on top of what we've got currently. As our facilities are involved, are evolving and our community is evolving, it's it's really critical for us to keep up with that evolution. People still use libraries, they just use us in different ways, and so libraries of the future have to be flexible and adaptable. To changing preferences and expectations and needs. When you come to libraries today, we don't shush people anymore, but yet people still come to the library and they have an expectation for quiet spaces. So we have. So we have to accommodate traditional and non-traditional uses of public libraries, both quiet and noisy activities, both solitary and social functions. All of these things are happening in public libraries of today. So here's our building philosophy. I mean, in a nutshell, our 21st century library standards are about having facilities that are both functional and attractive, state with state-of-the-art technology, collaborative, flexible, adaptable spaces, usually meeting rooms of different sizes, study rooms, learning spaces, computer labs, maker spaces, and just making sure that we take up every inch of real estate possible and free it up for people to use in all the ways that they'd like to use it. I show this slide. I'm sure you guys have seen this before, but this is really important and very critical to us in terms of how we think about how we prioritize our resources. Equality is something very different from equity. This past year, we touched literally every single one of our 19 branches and gave them a refresh. And I'm going to talk about that shortly, what we did. But basically, everybody across the library system got something new, whether it's new shelving, new furniture, fresh paint. So every, and what we were doing is we just wanted to invest in all of our libraries to make sure that we're investing in the people who use them. And we want to make sure that everybody, regardless of where they live in the county, have access to a great and modern library, a branch library. Equity is something different. We understand that there are vulnerable people in our communities, communities that have been historically under-invested in. And so the question for us at Baltimore County Public Library is, well, yes, we serve everyone. How can we be most intentional towards the underserved? And how do we allocate resources that serve everyone? Yes, which is equality, but also level the playing field for the most vulnerable among us. And towards the end of the presentation, I'm going to talk to you about how we are prioritizing some of those projects where we can have the most impact in terms of achieving equity. So this past year, as I said, we touched every single one of our 19 branches. We replaced shelving at our Pikesville, Rosedale and White Marsh branching, branches. Shelving take, takes up a valuable amount of real estate in all of our branches. And so these three branches had a lot of old shelving that was installed in the 80s and 90s. The style back then was to have shelving that would literally go all the way up to the ceilings. And so with new shelving, we were able to open up the spaces, allow in more natural sunlight with lower shelving, which made the spaces look bigger and less crowded. And then with that, with, with not having books all the way on the top shelf, all the way up to the ceiling, but now having shelving that's a little bit lower, the books are within arm's reach, which makes our collection more accessible to the majority of people using our libraries. And then with lower shelving, we're able to have better lines of sight, which enhances safety and security in all of our branches. Hackensville Branch also happens to be our busiest branch. We made significant improvements over the past year. We replaced the glass storefront on the, on the front of the building, opening up more light. We replaced a lot of the furniture in the children's room. We switched out some of the furniture, the shelving, just gave it a refresh and customers are just really thrilled with the investments that we have made in that branch in the past year. Pikesville Branch is another one. Pikesville is our second busiest branch. We revamped the children's area with new furniture, lower shelving, better shelving. We also touched up the parking lot significantly. We restriped it, repaved it, and it just looks more better. It looks better and it's a lot more functional for our customers. Perry Hall Branch is another one where we did some significant upgrades over the past year. Perry Hall was the last of our 19 branches that had the old service desk model where we would have two or multiple service desks. And we consolidated those two service desks into one. And the one desk that we got rid of, it was this huge massive thing, the size of the Starship Enterprise. We took that away and we gave that space back to our customers. And what you're seeing right here is where the old service desk was. And so we added some new furniture, including these booths, which are really, really popular. The second they were installed, people immediately started using them. And when you go today, there's not, they're never empty. They're always full. People are really, really pleased with the improvements that we've made there. Catonsville Branch is currently closed for renovation. It is, it's a seven and a half million dollar project. Three and a half million came from the state via the Maryland State Library Capital Grant. And it is expected to open in April of 2024, knocking on all the wood that it opens on time. Catonsville is our third busiest branch, so customers there are really excited to have their new branch back. And we have several ongoing and upcoming library capital projects over the next year, year and a half. We're going to be updating the restrooms at Pikesville. That's going to happen starting in the spring. We're going to be updating the meeting room and the restrooms at the White Marsh Branches. We are going to be looking at digital signage for our White Marsh and Rosedale Branches. We're going to be replacing the HVAC and adding some study rooms at North Point. We're also looking to make some improvements here at Towson Branch that would impact not this, not only just the library portion, the public-facing portion of the facility, but also here in library administration, which is back of the house. And then the final four projects I'm going to talk a little bit more about in upcoming slides. So this goes back to the equity piece that I talked about earlier. So Social Vulnerability Index is a tool that's used by the federal government to identify communities that are vulnerable. What if there is, for example, a global pandemic or there's a natural disaster? There are some communities that are going to rebound very quickly, but then there are other communities that are going to struggle with being resilient and being able to recover in those types of scenarios. And so the higher Social Vulnerability Index rating they have, the more vulnerable they are. So we identified the, the Social Vulnerability Index rating for all of our 19 branches. And it just so happens that of the five major capital projects that we have ongoing right now, and when I say major, I'm talking about renovation, I'm talking about expansion, I'm talking about new construction. Of the five, four of them have the highest Social Vulnerability Index. So that's that equity piece where we very intentionally identify the communities that are most vulnerable in Baltimore County and make sure that they have the best, absolutely the best public library branch that we can give them. So after Catonsville reopens from renovation, then Woodlawn Branch will be closing for renovation. And that is going to, the anticipated, the anticipated construction start date for Woodlawn is going to be October of 2024. It's a $22 million project. Baltimore County Government is going to be funding the full cost of this project. Right now, we're in design phase and we're just really looking forward to getting this project started. And this will be a renovation as well as an expansion. As you will recall, there was a health clinic on the lower level of the library. That space was vacated and we claimed it to be a part of the library. So now it's going to be a part of this renovated facility and it's going to give the library about an additional six or 7,000 square feet, which is going to be pretty significant. Essex Branch is going to be coming up next after Woodlawn. We have acquired new property where we're going to build a brand-new Essex Library. The new property is on Old Eastern Avenue, right by Marsh Estates Elementary. And we're looking to build a fantastic building, much bigger than the facility that we have currently. We have currently $6 million in county funding and we're going to commence design this upcoming fiscal year. We still don't have construction funding, but we're hoping to at least get started with design and kind of get a, and kind of get the project going and build a little momentum and hopefully the construction dollars will, will come. Lansdowne Branch is another one. This, this community is very vulnerable. Currently, this branch is 5,400 square feet, but it needs to be at least 25,000 square feet to adequately serve the community. And Lansdowne, interestingly, is one of the fastest-growing areas in Baltimore County. So we're thinking about the, the community, the population that it serves right now, but we're also thinking in terms of the future and what the opportunities are there. So over the next few months, we're going to be working in collaboration with Aging to look at the site and identify what is possible on the site currently. They're also interested in improving their footprint and improving their facility. So we're going to see if, if the current land can sustain the both of us in terms of what we need, if there's an opportunity for a shared facility and then we go from there. But we do thankfully have $12 million in state funding for Lansdowne Library. Randallstown Library is another where we received $3.55 million in state funding. There is the Liberty Road corridor revitalization effort. And the intent is to improve the Randalls Town Library and have the Randalls Town Library be an anchor for that revitalization that's going to come. Over the, over December and January, we did some community input. We partnered with the Department of Recreation and Parks, who also received some money from the state towards their community center in Randalls Town. Instead of the two of us separately doing community engagement, we decided to join forces and kind of ask the community all at the same time what, what they hoped and what they dreamed and what they needed. And our goal ultimately is to have a shared facility, but we're going to see, wait and see first what the community says before any decisions are made. And that's the end of my slides. Thank you for your support. Welcome to ask, answer any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions from board members? Howard?
Um, I'm going to apologize that I haven't been in your libraries recently, but know that, you know, all the high-tech computers and all that our children are using and all. I guess I think back to, you know, when I had a project, I'd go to Towson and back in high school days. Do they have access through internet, whatever, to a lot of the facilities and equipment and all that you all have in the libraries now, students, I guess is what I'm really looking for, the question or the answer.
Yeah, it's a great question. We have computers in all of our facilities. And we also now circulate Chromebooks. Since the pandemic, we circulate Wi-Fi hotspots for folks who may not have internet access. At this point, we have 750 hotspots in our collection. And then this past year, we launched our long-term lending program. So you could have, you can check out a Chromebook and/or you can check out a high-speed router, which allows up to 30 connections in, in the home. And we, and we checked those out for six months at a time. We recognize that not everybody in Baltimore County has access to a computer. Not everybody has access to affordable, reliable internet. And part of our job in the library, again, is to let, try to level the playing field and try to make sure that everybody can compete in our economy, that kids can be successful in school, and they cannot do that without internet and without computers. So that's where we're, that's what we're doing here in Baltimore County. Thanks for asking that question.
The only follow-up to it would be, can they come in from their computers at home somehow? You know, if they're doing a project, rather their parents can't bring them to the library or something, or is that access not allowed or not available?
Um, like, do you mean access to our databases?
Yep, you know, where you have certain books or whatever that might be online or whatever, so they could, don't have to come physically to the library is what I'm asking you.
Yes, absolutely. We have a virtual library with a full suite of databases and also a very robust collection of eBooks, e-audio books. So you don't necessarily have to step foot into a library to access our digital collection.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So Howard, just, I would recommend checking out their website. Lots of good stuff. Ms. Brophy?
Thank you so much for the presentation. So you had mentioned during the presentation that we have a very little amount of square footage of library space per the amount of residents. Is that, is that kind of like a statewide statistic that you were referring to or?
So the, the standard of one square foot of public library space per capita, that is a state standard. County, by county, every county is different. I don't think, I'm not sure that there is any county in the state of Maryland that has achieved that one square foot of public library space per capita standard. I would love it if we could get close here in Baltimore County. And I would love it if we could be the first and only county in the state of Maryland that achieves that standard. But how, how powerful would that be if we were able to say that as a county, regardless of where you live, there's, there's a public library very close to you. There are parts of our county where we just don't have a presence. And there are parts of the county where they're very spread out. And if your transportation challenge, you may not be able to get to a library. And being able to have more library locations, larger, larger, library locations will allow us ultimately to be able to better serve our community.
And as a follow-up to that, so the Department of Parks and Recreation, they kind of have a site acquisition plan coming up. Does the library have something similar, maybe creating some public-private partnerships for leased space for a minimal amount? Or, you know, just acquiring new space similar to the way Parks and Recs is?
We will. We're not quite there yet. My focus right now is the 19 facilities that we have. Some of them are really not in the best of shape. I'm thinking like Lansdowne, which is so woefully, woefully inadequate and trying to get the resources to really improve that facility, to level the playing field for folks in that community. But that's coming, what you're describing is coming next, really looking at what are the parts of Baltimore County where we do not have a presence? Middle River is a really classic example where that is one, I think, really one of the fastest-growing parts of Baltimore County. We don't have a branch there. So identifying where those places where we are not, but where we should be and working with potential partners to be able to acquire some, some property or, you know, get in partnership with, with some developers to see if we can, we can work something out. So that's, that's what's coming next.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Heckman?
Thank you again for your presentation. I, it's really cool to see the projects that you were talking about years ago are now coming to fruition. And it's really exciting and that's no doubt a credit to your leadership. So thank you for that. I, question I have is, I, if I recall correctly, last year you mentioned you were exploring the possibility of relocating the main Towson Library out of downtown Towson and maybe somewhere out where there would be better parking or something like that. Is that no longer being considered? Is that, I noticed it was pretty low on the Social Vulnerability Index. So is that, you know, reprioritizing some of these things?
Thank you for that question. Our, our, our focus has shifted. When we've spoken to folks in the community, when we're looking at who's using the library, what we're hearing overwhelmingly is that people like the library exactly where it is. They just want to fix it and make it better. And so ultimately, my goal is a brand-new Towson Library in its current location. And we are, actually, we've engaged a firm to do a Towson Library Economic Impact Report and Study to help us make the case in terms of why Towson Library should remain exactly where it is. We, we add a lot to the local economy here in downtown Towson. And when we talk to our customers, the people who use Towson Library, they regularly say to us, we come to the library and then we go and then we go shopping and then we go and we go eat at restaurants and then we go and we do this and we do that. And so having Towson Library at the heart of that, I think is really critical, not just for the library, but for our customers, for the community, for Towson University students, et cetera. So that, that is our long-term goal. Earlier in the presentation, I did mention that over the next year, we are going to be making some improvements to the facility, just to kind of make the building more habitable and more functional for those of us that have to live in it. But the long-term goal is just a brand-new, brand- But the long-term goal is just a brand-new, brand-new facility, replacing the one that we have currently.
I'm so glad to hear that, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolfson? You're, you're muted, Kathy.
Still. Sorry about that. I just wanted to thank you and as a very devoted Libby user, I just can't say enough about the ebooks and the audiobooks. Expanded my perspective of the world in a big way. A couple, two years ago, you came and you highlighted the maker spaces in Westminster in the Carroll County Branch. I know are used extensively. Are there plans to? Include those, those spaces in in our libraries that are coming up? Like the Woodlawn Branch?
Yes, thank you for that question, that's a great question, so our Catonsville Library is going to have a recording studio. And that's perfect with that for that community because that's supposed to be the music capital, the music center of Baltimore County. So having a space where people can, anybody can just go and record music is going to be really awesome and we're going to have dedicated staff. For that specific space in the library. And Woodlawn, we're talking about a digital media lab. And and that's it, we haven't quite figured out what's going to, what's going to be for Lansdowne or Essex or Randallstown. And that's where the community engagement piece is really critical, it's really important that. Our libraries reflect the communities that we are serving. I've got all sorts of ideas on things that we can do, but first I want to ask the community, what's important to you, what do you want, what do you need? How do we make sure that when you walk into this brand-new library or this newly renovated library facility? That you you see yourself reflected right back in it, and so that's, that's really critical for us here at at BCPO.
Thank you, and is, am I? Misunderstanding or is the, the Woodlawn Branch supposed to house the Woodlawn Senior Center as well?
Uh, no, that's a separate project and. I can't remember the name of the street that that's going to be on, Deb, I know Deb Schindel's on here somewhere, she can probably give you more information about that, but that is a separate facility.
Great, thanks so much.
Yes, and that's around the corner, next across from the bar, I think it's Woodlawn Drive. And it's right across from. The pub and it's already in existence.
Want to cross from Monahan's?
Monahan's, correct. It is the community center and the senior center, it has been there for years. And we are expanding the senior center onto the existing senior center, so it's still in the same location, but it is, it's. Less than a mile from the.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Haver?
Oh, thank you so much, and Emily had a great suggestion about. Possibly using some vacant retail space when you're renovating a library. Have you looked into going to maybe some desert areas where? People had a hard time getting to and maybe storing, you know, having some of your books and resources there. While you're doing the renovation?
Yeah, thank you Nancy for that question, um, yes, that's, that's something that we, we always consider. Woodlawn is a really good example, when we close Woodlawn, Woodlawn is going to be an 18-month renovation project. And as I said before, it's a vulnerable community and I am personally not comfortable leaving this vulnerable community. Without access to any public library for 18 months, that's, that's way too long. So what we're going to do for Woodlawn is we're going to have a temporary. Pop-up space where we can provide. Access to core services and we have some sort of library presence, it's not going to be the exact same. Footprint of the current Woodlawn Library, but it'll be a space, a temporary space where we can be and we can continue to serve the community. Whenever we get to Towson Library, I see us having to do the exact same thing. So it just, it just depends on the project and and what's going on in the site where the current facility is. But we just want, and and the community that surrounds it and what the needs are, but that's something that we. Will, we are always considering and will consider for future projects.
You're doing a great job, Sonia, thank you.
Thank you Nancy.
Mr. McInnis? Yeah, I thought I saw your hand.
What process is currently being used to judge the, any new? Books or materials to our school libraries for appropriateness?
You'd have to talk to the school libraries, the Baltimore County Public Library System is separate from Baltimore County Public Schools. We each have our own collection development policies and procedures. That determine what books end up on the shelves at each of our facilities, our, our, our policy is on our website. I would imagine that you can check with the Baltimore County Public School. Check their website to see what what their policy is.
Any additional questions?
I had my hand out, but.
Oh, sorry, I missed that Todd, go ahead.
That's fine, I, I just want to commend you on Catonsville. I think the live music or the ability to tape music and renovating that space is an important part of our community. Have you thought about, we used to have smaller venues like. But I know off of 95, close to Route 1 there, there used to be a small. Not a full library, but a littler library. Have you thought about that also to to have access, to give access and have, you know, computers, internet for for individuals?
Thank you Todd for that question, um, no, I'm not aware of that, I think that was before my time and and. I'm not aware of that history, but we're always thinking about. How we can better serve our community and how we can have a presence where we don't have a presence. How we can fill gaps, another, another area of focus for us, which is not a subject for for tonight, but. We have bookmobiles and so we were out in the community and going to people and meeting people where they are. Especially people who don't have access to a public library branch, so. Always thinking of how we can, how we can make those connections and how we can serve people in the community.
Yes, I would, I would say that, you know, I've been to a number of community events down my way and the libraries. Not that far, but the bookmobiles are often at a number of them. If nothing else, reminding people what libraries we have and giving people an ax, chance to sort of. Ruse some, some books there. Any additional questions? Not seeing any hand raised. Again, echoing the rest of the board, thank you very much for the presentation, it's always fascinating to hear what what you guys are trying to do and we, we wish you luck and. Look forward to seeing, hearing from you next year and seeing what's all been completed.
Thank you so much, thanks for your time this evening.
If there are no further comments or questions for tonight, we will adjourn. I'd like to thank all of the presenters for their presentations. The next meeting of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program will be this Thursday, January 25th at 5:30. That meeting will also be virtual. Information for that meeting can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. Thank you for attending, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you Scott.